Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the meeting for June 18th, 2019. Today's invocation will be delivered by Rabbi Josh Birkenwald from the Congregation Sinai, Sinai, excuse me. Councilmember Davis will tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor. It is my honor to present Rabbi Birkenwald this afternoon. Rabbi Birkenwald received his ordination from the Jewish Theological Seminary of America in New York City. He earned his BA in Foreign Affairs from the University of Virginia, which included a year of study in Jerusalem. Rabbi Birkenwald sits on the Board of Directors of the Jewish Federation of Silicon Valley and serves as a spiritual leader at Congregation Sinai. Congregation Sinai is a diverse congregation that embraces people of all ages and backgrounds who seek meaningful ways to be Jewish. They provide spiritual, social, and educational needs to their congregants in a warm and friendly community. Please welcome Rabbi Birkenwald.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis, for your introduction and for inviting me to deliver the invocation for this morning's meeting. Actually, Mayor Liccardo, you pronounced it correctly in Hebrew, Sinai. Nicely done. It's an honor to be here. It feels that as our society becomes more and more open, multicultural, and technologically advanced, we're also more afraid. This is the dark side of globalization and instant communication. We are so much more aware of the things that terrify us, even though by every metric, we are safer, healthier, and wealthier than at any previous time in human history. I don't need to tell you that fear can be a great motivator. The cynical politician uses fear as a weapon to attract support: fear of the stranger, fear of terrorism, fear of losing housing or health insurance, fear of debt, fear of environmental collapse, and the list goes on and on. In the Jewish community, we experience this fear on a daily basis. In the wake of antisemitic attacks this year in Pittsburgh and Pahue, we're further fortifying our synagogue, including hiring security every week during Sabbath worship. It's an enormous drain on time and resources, especially considering that our members are far more at risk of getting into a traffic accident on the way to services. There's a poem that we recite, or sing, actually, at the end of services. If you come to Congregation Sinai, you're all invited. On a Saturday morning, you'll see the children of our congregation coming up to sing it. It's a poem called "Adon Olam," which means "Master of the Cosmos." "Adon Olam" was composed by Solomon Ivan Gabirol, an 11th-century Spanish poet. "Adon Olam Ashermalach," "Master of the Cosmos, who reigned before anything was created. When by his will all things were made, only then was his name proclaimed king. When all things shall cease to exist, alone shall he reign in awe. And he was, and he is, and he will be in splendor. God is one, and there is no second to which he can be compared. Without beginning, without ending, to him is all power and dominion." The poet describes a distant God, a God so transcendent, so far beyond the physical reality that we know that the human mind cannot even conceive of it. I imagine Ivan Gabirol going out at night, looking up at the stars, and contemplating how small and insignificant he is. His troubles and his fears are nothing compared to the force that set all of this into motion. But then he shifts. "But he is my God, my Redeemer lives, rock of my pain in time of distress. And he is my banner and my refuge, my portion, my cup on the day that I fall, that I call." The poet claims a personal relationship with the Master of the Cosmos. The distant, inconceivable Creator is the ultimate source of comfort and salvation. And then this leads to the final line of the poem, which we also traditionally recite as a bedtime prayer. "Into his hand I entrust my soul, when I go to sleep and when I awake. And with my soul, my body too. God is with me, and I shall not be afraid." There's a legend that when we go to sleep, our souls actually leave our bodies and go on adventures during the night, hence dreams. Through God's compassion, the soul returns just before we wake up in the morning. Going to sleep is terrifying. Think about the experience of a young child. Why does a child not want her parent to leave the room before bedtime? Why is the child scared of monsters in the closet? Because night is scary. The child doesn't know for certain whether her parent will be there in the morning. Our job is to reassure our child that while she sleeps, we will protect her, that she will awake the next morning, and when she awakes, we will be there for her. To go to sleep is a tremendous act of faith. Ivan Gabirol channels that primal fear depicting God as a parent offering reassurance and protection, such an intimate relationship. But how does he make this shift from the infinite God, who is not bound by time and space, into this intimate parent? Well, Ivan Gabirol hides his answer. I'm going to recite that final line of the poem in Hebrew. Listen very carefully. The human heartbeat. The answer to the poet's fear and loneliness is buried deep within his heart, and he can only hear it by listening carefully. So whatever we call it, God, the soul, the self, the answer to our fears must come from within us. "Adon Olam, Master of the Cosmos, grant your blessing to all who dwell in our city, along with its leaders, officers, and officials, who faithfully devote themselves to the needs of the public. Bestow wisdom and understanding upon them, so that peace and security, happiness and freedom will never depart from our land. And may we all gain the insight to know that fear can never be tempered by attacking the other. The solution to fear can only be found deep within the human heart. Amen."
Amen. Thank you, Rabbi. Thank you, Rabbi. Please join me now as we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. First, I'll ask Councilmember Peralis, join me at the podium, will present a commendation to the Lavelle family for aiding a family affected by the devastating Paradise wildfire.
I'd like to invite the members of the Lavelle family on down. We have with us today Brendan, Catherine, or Kat Nicholas, their five-year-old, Evelyn, their three-year-old, and Brendan, their two-year-old. And also in attendance is Tim Lavelle, Brendan's father, and Mary Fisher, Tim's partner. Welcome. So in November 2018, Paradise, California, as we all know, was engulfed in flames, displacing over 25,000 residents, destroying nearly 14,000 homes, and tragically resulting in 88 people losing their lives. This wildfire, known as the Camp Fire, which is reported to be the most destructive wildfire in California history. The Burns family had been living in Paradise with relatives to save money to buy a home when the wildfire hit. Needless to say, the fire destroyed their belongings and displaced the Burns family. The Lavelle family, who we have here today, had reached out to the Burns family through an adoptive family website to extend their home as a safe place to stay. And here's what's unique: the Lavelle family had shared a similar experience right here in 2017, when our Coyote Creek flooded, and they had lost irreplaceable valuables and damage to their property. The Lavelle family lives in the Olander neighborhood here in the heart of my district, in a home that they purchased in 2010. And after the flood, the Lavelles have now repaired their home and built a separate living space in the basement to assist the Burns family. The Lavelle family personally understands the damage of environmental disasters, and this motivated their family to extend their home and emotional support to the Burns family during their critical time of need. It's truly a heartwarming story in a very tragic event, both with the Lavelle family having themselves experienced one, but then now opening up their hearts and their home for another family. And so it's my honor to be able to recognize the Lavelle family, and I want to ask our mayor to provide the commendation and for Brendan to say a few words. Thank you, Councilmember Peralis. I recall, in the days after the flood, both he and Mayor Liccardo were out on the streets with their teams, helping us out. We needed a lot of support in the days following that disaster, and we've been lucky, blessed, to be able to return the favor to someone else experiencing a similar loss. So it's been a blessing for us as well, having gained much through the experience.
Okay, Councilmember Peralis is staying right here because we're going to ask our Downtown Streets team, come on down. It felt like this was The Price is Right. To thank them for their commitment to working together with the community to tackle our homelessness crisis and to beautify our city.
I do. I just hung out with you yesterday. And I will invite any of my colleagues, or all of my colleagues, that feel obliged to want to come down. I know the Downtown Streets team, although their name sounds as though they serve primarily downtown, that is not the case. They serve all over our city, and I know a number of my colleagues benefit from that. And in fact, in our budget this year, we were able to allocate, with the support of the council and the mayor, an additional $250,000 to support Downtown Streets Team and to support our community members citywide. So Downtown Streets Team was founded by Eileen Richardson in 2005, and it began as a homeless reduction program in Palo Alto. It now serves the city of San Jose and 13 other Bay Area cities. Downtown Streets Team employs individuals that are homeless or at risk of homelessness to work on beautification projects, and in return, they receive noncash stipends to cover basic needs. Downtown Streets Team has successfully transitioned 888 homeless individuals into houses. And personally here, another benefit to the entire community, they've removed over 4,000 tons of debris from our communities and our waterways. Thank you so much. To fight homelessness, Downtown Streets Team combines compassion and innovative leadership with collaboration between the private sector, government agencies, social service agencies, and our community at large. Last year, we partnered with Downtown Streets Team to help homeless residents obtain full-time work with other organizations and to obtain housing while cleaning our city through the Transitional Jobs Pilot Program. As I already mentioned, we were able to allocate an additional $250,000 with the support of our council here, a number of council members that made those requests as well, and the support of our mayor. This will help us to remove at least another 1,000 tons of litter this coming year. Downtown Streets Team makes a significant impact, reducing homelessness and cleaning up our city, and it is my honor to ask our mayor to provide a commendation for Downtown Streets Team and to invite their San Jose Project Manager, Scott Van Gordon, to say All right. Let me raise this up a little bit. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Peralis, other council members, and Mayor Liccardo, thank you so much for the recognition and support today and throughout the years. San Jose has proven to be a city that values diversity, innovation, and community, and we are so proud to call San Jose our home. It is our passion to offer our neighbors experiencing homelessness opportunities to build themselves up and support them in making positive changes in their lives. It is ultimately our team members that we honor today for showing up for themselves, for each other, and for our community, and for that, we thank you all so much.
So I'm sheepishly here to say, I managed to get so excited, I completely missed the third, the last, and very important ceremonial. We want to honor Victory Outreach Church for their 40 years of service. Councilman Kambs is here. I suspect we have some members of Victory Outreach here. Please join us. Great.
It is my honor to introduce to many of you one of the great community leaders, some of the great community leaders in my district, Jesus Todd, that the two greatest commandments are: to love the Lord, your God, with all your heart, soul, mind, and strength; and to love your neighbor as yourself. Victory Outreach Church of San Jose doesn't just talk about love, they put their love to faith and into action. Today, we join them in celebrating a milestone anniversary. On July 1st, Victory Outreach Church in San Jose will have served our city for 40 years. Their mission is to, their mission-driven church with a passion to bring freedom and healing to those in our community who are trapped in the powerful grips of drugs, gangs, and prostitution. In addition, Victory Outreach partners with the mayor's Gang Prevention Task Force and local community-based organizations to serve at-risk families, youth, and homeless. A core service of Victory Outreach is the Victory Homes for Men and for Women, which have highly, which have a high success rate, empowering individuals to take control of their lives, exchanging hopelessness for a new resolve and determination to help others. On behalf of the city of San Jose and the entire city council, I want to thank you for your years of dedication, 40 years of dedication, and I would like to invite Paul Quijada to say a few words about Victory Outreach and the work that they're doing in our community to help others every day.
Well, first of all, I just want to thank Mayor Liccardo and City Councilman Kambs. What an honor, what a privilege it is for us as a ministry here to serve here in the city of San Jose. You know, we started in 1979. It was really to reach the inner city. Many gang members in this city were reached through this ministry, and many of them now are pastors. My father was a heroin addict here in San Jose, worked for FMC. I don't know if anybody remembers that back in the day. And my father became a heroin addict, got lost and all that. And Victory Outreach, I was just a young boy, and Victory Outreach went out and reached me, and now I'm a pastor there, here in Victory Outreach. So I'm so glad to be part of this team and serve alongside with our team here and serve along with the city. And we have such a heart now for the homelessness that we see here. You know, I was mentioned, we have group homes for men and women here that we serve at no charge. We're out there in the streets, reaching them and letting them know that there's a place for them. So as we're celebrating these 40 years, it is an honor, it's a privilege to serve alongside our city and to be honored today. So thank you very much. Oh, sorry. And you know, we're so privileged. We still have our founder's wife, our founder who started our church past in 2011, but his wife is still here, and I just want to introduce to you Mitzi Morales. She comes in.
Thank you for that welcome. I just want to say that it has been such a privilege over these last 40 years. I came here as a young, young girl. I was 20 years old, and all of you remember, 1979 was the Story and King days. Let's not bring up all the old stuff, but if you've been serving this city, you know and can see the changes that have taken place. But we love this city. I love this city alongside many of you, or all of you. That's why you're here. Public service takes a passion, it takes a love, and it takes a commitment, and that's what Victory Outreach has done. And we are committed to our city. There's gems, it's a gem, and there's beautiful people in this city that just need to be touched and reached. And I believe that all of you that are here today, along with our council and our city, all our police force, and everyone in this city, this is a beautiful city, and I believe that we want to help people. And so we are just committing ourselves to another 40 years of just reaching and helping and reaching out to those in need. And if we can help you in any way, or we can partner with you, you let us know. And if we need you, amen, we may knock on your door and say, hey, partner with us. Because it takes partnership, and it takes people who are willing to work together to accomplish. So I just want you to know that we continue to serve our city. We're here, we have a lot of vision and dreams, and we believe that together, they can be accomplished. I want to thank you once again for all those who have, who serve our city and who have given us this honor today. And it's been an honor to be here 40 years, and we'll continue to serve our city.
All right, on to orders of the day. Does anyone on the council have any changes to the printed agenda?
Mayor, is this the time that I would bifurcate the item in question 7.1?
Why don't we wait until we pull it up? We know we'll bifurcate that.
That'll be fine, thank you.
Okay, great. Any other changes? All right, on to motion, let's vote. Okay, on to the closed session report. This should be brief.
No report.
There was no closed session. Okay, we're on to item 3.4, which is approval of various budget actions for fiscal year All right, any comments or questions? There's no staff report. All right, let's vote.
Okay, so the item that's going to show up is not going to be the item because it's missing from this screen, so I'm just going to put it under ceremonial items.
Mr. Beekman, come on down. Thank you for notifying me. Before you vote, we have Mr. Beacon.
Mayor, did we skip consent?
We did. We have to consider these two items before consent.
Hi, I had a few words I wanted to offer. I was told budget item BD 56, 12-plus ALPRs for downtown parking enforcement ideas, will not be on the 2019-20 budget, but I'm still worried two or three new ALPRs may somehow find a way to be requested. I would like to talk about this item more this week in public meetings, and to bring up this item, you'll be talking about public oversight for Measure T later today. I'd like to talk about it more at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to the vote, 3.4.
It's fixed.
It's fixed. All right, item 3.5 is Adoption Annual Appropriation Ordinance and Annual Funding Sources Resolution for the Budget and Resolution Establishing the Appropriation Limit for this Fiscal Year. All right, is there any question? No comments? All right, we're on to the consent calendar. All right, are there any items any councilman would like to pull? Nope. Okay. Mr. Beekman? This is consent calendar. You didn't specify which item.
Hi, we're on to consent, and I don't have my hat. I gave myself one of the worst haircuts in the world. That's why I wear my hat all the time. A thank you to your joint meeting with Santa Clara County on homelessness in late October 2018, and as a part of your previous council minutes, you are approving today an item 2.1. There are many different forms of thinking within many different areas of the country, with the issues of women rights, immigration rights, housing rights, working rights, and human rights, and with the help of the counties of Alameda and San Francisco, I feel Santa Clara County and the city of San Jose have the ability to quietly shape the future direction of this country and to formally impress the people of this earth with respectful, well-reasoned, thoughtful, and progressive ideas and terms. My only hope is that the city of San Jose can better find the good examples of Santa Clara County and begin to more care about how openness and transparency with its community is how to be innovative and how to create peace with the future of technology questions at this time in our history and lives. I have a few more items to mention here as I go down. With the MTC Barrier Transportation Board funding downtown, the future of funding for downtown and other city projects, will its projects and dollar amounts be clearly spelled out to the public when these projects become more fully realized? All of this brings up the thinking we may possibly need, what I need to talk about with your Measure T public oversight funding later today as well. And finally, as in good human nature and good local community policies can always be around, your retroactive approval of Dumpster Day process. I hope that good ideas can be in place for dumpsters to be placed in a neighborhood on a Saturday morning to invite people with homes and people who are homeless within local neighborhoods. I think it can be a way to work on better communication and relationships within a local neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, let's vote then on the consent calendar. We're on to city manager's report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to announce and very pleased that I was able to promote Jim Shannon to budget director. That happened yesterday, Margaret retired on Friday, and we are extremely fortunate to have someone like Jim in the organization that can take over and in kind of a seamless way continue the great work of the Budget Office. For those of you who don't know, Jim's been with the city for about seven years, and most recently has served as our Assistant Budget Director. So thank you, Jim, for taking over the reins. I know we've got Bonnie there with you and some other staff from the Budget Office, and just really happy to have you continue the great work. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim, for your willingness to take it on. And good luck. All right. Appreciate all the hard work of the Budget Office through the last several months in particular. We know it's been, as it always is, very, very challenging, and appreciate the many late hours. Okay, we're on to item 3.6, which is a report and request for proposal for the workers' comprehensive services. There's no report. We'll entertain a motion. Motion from Councilmember Jimenez, and there was a second somewhere. I think Councilmember Sparza, okay. All right, let's vote.
Item 3.8 is Community Oversight Committee for Measure T. I submitted a memorandum requesting that we add four additional positions to the ones that represent the geographic districts of the city, and asked for my councilmembers, my colleagues' support on that. We know that there were many stakeholders that were deeply invested, certainly in getting this passed, and certainly they will also have unique knowledge to bring to bear, and I think that will help with the citizens' oversight. I would expect that and restrict that the ones that, at least, that I would bring forward to the council for consideration would all be residents of the City of San Jose.
There's no presentation. Councilmember Sparza?
So I just wanted to clarify, so they're all residents of San Jose for the four buckets?
Yes.
Okay.
Whoever I nominate.
Thank you.
Okay, any, okay, Councilmember Canes?
Yeah, I'll just, you know, there's, we're adding obviously some people to this, and I don't know that that we, I'm not against it, but why wouldn't we want to include somebody from like a taxpayers' association if we're adding people that, people from those, you know, if those, if we're having special people being appointed to this because of their expertise, why would we not appoint somebody from a tax background as well?
We could, the expectation is we've got 10 residents representing all the districts of the city who are all taxpayers, and would, I would expect all be advocates for the position of residents who obviously want services delivered at the best possible value for the lowest possible cost.
Well, I mean, just because you're a resident doesn't mean you're great at looking at tax issues.
Fair enough.
You know, honestly, I've, you know, I'm okay with it, but I just thought if we're going to be making a change like that, can we include, can we include a tax expert or a, you know, a CPA in the mix, or somebody who's good at looking at how the money's actually being spent on a, as part of their, you know, if they're an expert in something like that?
Sounds like, if what you're concerned is about scrutiny of the spending, is that really the focus?
Yes, yes. This is a, this is a tax bond and...
Yeah, so it may not be tax expertise necessarily you want, is perhaps accounting or...
That would be, that would be good.
Okay.
An accountant, at least somebody who understands.
Or auditing.
Yeah, an auditing, something financial person related.
Okay, I'm certainly open to any suggestions from my colleagues in terms of how we characterize that category. I think it sounds like some kind of auditing or accounting focus.
I would appreciate that.
Okay. Councilmember Renas?
I had a question about the amount of times that the committee is going to meet. It says just a minimum of once a year, but that doesn't really reflect the realistic expectation of a committee member to meet only once a year. I mean, if we want to be, we want to recommend the right person, we also have to be honest and upfront about what that commitment looks like. So I'd like to ask a little more about what would that commitment look like?
Matt Keno is here. I'll just add, I think the expectation is really the heavy lifting is being done by staff around all this, and they're continuing to do it, but, Matt?
Thank you, Matt Keno, Director of Public Works. So there is a requirement that they meet once a year at a minimum to review the audit and then report their findings on that audit back to the mayor and city council. I do agree with you that if we just meet once a year, they're not going to get familiar enough with the program. So what we've discussed internally is having a first meeting before they are just faced after a year with the audit. And so we are going to have an initial meeting with them all to educate them on, give them background, get them familiar with what's going on. So when they have that first annual audit meeting, they come with a little more prepared and a little more background.
If I could just add, so we've just had another bond measure, the public safety bond measure, where we had a citizens' oversight committee for about 12 years. Initially, we tried to meet about four times a year. The committee, I think, quickly decided that was too many times. And I think for a while, we kind of set it into a rhythm of about twice a year. And then, really for the past, I think, four or five years, the committee only met once a year. But Matt was right, that was after they became pretty familiar with the program. But it is, there is some flexibility, and really the committee will kind of dictate how often they want to meet.
Great, well, that's good to hear, that the committee will also have that kind of flexibility. And I understand that you're going to do some training in the beginning, and so that they're able to come in when the audit comes in and understand it, and be able to analyze it and respond accordingly. So I feel more comfortable about that. I just want to be able to understand, I just wanted to understand a little bit more about what that committee member would actually do. And so if they're primarily going to take a look at the audit, then I think we need to make sure that we not only familiarize them with the Measure T measure, but also how do you look at an audit, and how do you, what kind of recommendations are we looking from them to provide us?
Good. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Foley? I'm sorry, Councilor Sparza, you were on and then off.
I'm on.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Foley?
Just a comment about the makeup of the committee and a question. When do you need the names from us or the recommendation from the council members as to the person from our district?
Great question.
Thank you for, oh, Matt? Tony was going to weigh in.
Tony, okay.
I spoke with his department. Well, first, we have to, we have to do a bunch of defining things and get the application, and what questions do they want on the application? So that's going to take at least a month probably to get that all worked out, especially with people taking vacations. So not until August at the earliest would we be going to you guys, we'll probably not post it until mid to late July. It'll just take, it'll take a few weeks to get the application process done.
Okay.
So if we really push it, August.
Okay, that just gives me an idea of when I should be thinking about it and prioritizing it. The other thing I'd just like to point out is that in the memo from staff, it actually talks about qualifications of people who might be selected to serve on this committee, and it includes, subject nominees should include expertise in fields of emergency, disaster response, public safety, finance, and/or transportation is highly desirable. So I would encourage my council colleagues, when they're looking at someone for this role, that they fit one of those categories, so that we do have a rounded expertise on the bond oversight committee. That's it, thank you.
Councilmember Sparza?
Yeah, so I wanted to go back to the buckets. So we have 11 seats, and we're talking about adding four more, and we just decided to add five more, is that correct? I want to make sure that...
I'd be happy to supplant the one citywide representative for one of those five, so there would just be...
Yeah, because I was thinking even versus odd is also one of the things I was just thinking. Okay.
So that would be five plus 10?
That sounds great to me. I just, but I just want to make sure we just caught that, that's it.
Okay.
Excuse me, could I ask, this is Matt Keno sitting in the public, can I ask a clarification? So the memorandum, Mayor, that you submitted is the, basically adding four but subtracting one, so I was at 14.
That's right.
And then...
There's a suggestion from Councilmember Canes, there's been no motion yet, but the suggestion was to add somebody with some auditing or accounting.
Okay, I thought that was going to, okay, I understand.
I could, sorry, Mayor, I don't want to speak out of turn if anybody's ahead of me. I will make the motion to include somebody with a background in accounting, doesn't necessarily have to be, pardon me, finance or accounting, to be included in the other people that are chosen or the at-large, or...
Second.
That's part of the motion, thank you.
All right, it's a motion, second, Mr. Beekman?
Hi, you know how this month I wanted to talk about, it was a time that we could think of how to refresh ourselves to the ideas of what could be good public policy, good public oversight, you know, good public practices with the public, how each person within government can learn to practice with the everyday community better. How can they be more open and just think about it and have it on their minds? That's been my big idea for this month of June. This may really explain a lot. I mean, I tried to describe earlier that in consent, you'll be talking about MTC funding. There's a slight possibility the ALPRs may return in a smaller form somewhere else in the budget now or in the future. The LED program obviously seems like it's not going to be, needed to be fully talked about this month, it seems that's not going to happen. With all those kind of things, you know, I feel, you know, and with Measure T, that is about, you know, it covers so much ground with, you know, issues of highway, technology, a whole bunch of issues. Is there a way to somehow meld, you know, my ideas of public oversight committee for the future of technology I've been trying to talk about? That seems what this is doing. And, you know, it's a great idea, and you've been introduced to this idea, and I've always talked about how I'm hopeful it will help with other projects and processes for yourselves within the city. Is there a way this idea can meld into taking on the future questions of technology that people have? And I can bring my concerns to this board if there's technology questions, and they will listen to me and know how to respond. And I hope this is what we're working towards, and you've talked with the ACLU a lot about this stuff, so I hope we all be talking about this stuff more in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this is motion from Councilmember Canes, second from Councilmember Sparza. Any other comment? Let's vote. All right, item 3.9 is the city attorney salary setting. I recommended adjustment in city attorney salary, recognizing that we seem to really be out of whack relative to where other cities are, including smaller cities in the county. And we're certainly grateful for the great job that Rick and his team do through what have been many challenging battles. And so the recommendation is there in the memorandum. Sorry? Okay, motion from Councilmember Foley, second from Vice Mayor. Comments, questions? Okay, let's vote. All right, that's unanimous, thank you. Item 4.1 are actions related to the Adobe Systems property located on West San Fernando Streets. We have two members of the community who'd like to speak, Justina Highland and Matt Cavado. Oh, I'm sorry, Nancy, there's probably a presentation, huh?
There are very few brief comments.
Oh, okay, please, take it away.
Thank you very much. Mayor and council staff is very excited to be before you with recommendations related to Adobe as described in the staff memo before you today. There are four different items we would like to touch on. First, staff has had the opportunity to review Councilmember Paralys's memo and supports and appreciates the direction. Staff looks forward to working with Adobe to explore integrating an artistic component into the future pedestrian bridge. Second, Adobe has changed the company name from Adobe Systems Incorporated to Adobe Inc., and all completed documents will reflect the Adobe Inc. name change. Third, the city is recommending to council that you proceed with a number of actions in support of the office project. In particular, staff is requesting that council authorize the city manager or his designee to negotiate and execute the purchase and sale agreement of the easement area described in the memo, and authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute an amendment to the South Tower parking agreement. Staff has provided the documents in substantially final form. As is city practice, staff would incorporate any council direction from today's discussion and finalize the completed documents. Only if there were substantive changes to the documents would staff seek additional council direction. Lastly, Adobe has submitted and is diligently processing an application for the vacation of the public service easements located on the loading ramp parcel described in your packet. If, in the unlikely event, the vacation is not approved by council as proposed, Adobe has agreed to relocate any public utilities at its own cost and agrees to accept private maintenance costs of such public service easements on the loading ramp parcel. We ask for authority to allow the city manager to enter into agreements necessary to accomplish these questions. And with that, staff is available to respond to any questions council may have.
Thank you. And I really want to thank Adobe for their investment and longstanding commitment to our city. We're thrilled to have them growing in our downtown. Certainly it was wonderful two decades ago to see the towers rise, and now to see them grow. And it's a great symbol for what downtown is becoming. I also want to thank them for their painstaking work through many of the challenging issues that have come up. And I know certainly Scott Ekman and Tamsin Bloom and many folks on the Adobe team, but on our team, Nancy Klein, Ed Moran, Arianne Collin, Ruve Vierakun, her time, Kelly Klein, everybody who's been really involved in this. This is a really important investment in our city, and obviously Adobe has been identified as our most prominent downtown resident, if you will, for many years. And we are thrilled to see them grow, and we're looking forward to seeing whatever becomes of this gateway that may be quite a prominent symbol here for folks who are coming into our city from Deer Don Station. This is going to be a great thing for us, so I'm very excited about this. Now, Justina Highland. Welcome. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have made that more clear.
Yeah, I thought if we didn't have, if there weren't any additional questions, but I thank you very much for the chance to speak.
Okay, all right, I understand, you prefer not to offer any rebuttal. Okay, Matthew Cavado from SVLG.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Matthew Cavado, I'm the Director of Housing, Transportation, and Community Engagement at the Silicon Valley Leadership Group. Proud to stand here in support of our member, Adobe, as they continue to build upon the work they've done in downtown San Jose to densify the downtown core and to bring up to 4,000 new jobs to the city center. Taking off my leadership group hat for a second to talk about, as a born and raised San Josean, born in 1988, by the way... San Josean, born in 1988 by the way, I remember my father commenting, who grew up in San Jose picking fruits and nuts from the fields of San Jose, he was a butcher growing up. And when we saw the Adobe Towers going up originally, my father commented that, you know, that's progress, that's progression of this city. And so I'm proud, my son is now three years old, I'll be able to show him the buildings as it's going up and say, it's continued progress. So, thank you all so much.
Thank you, Matthew. 1988, I didn't know they made people that young. All right. Yes, good point. All right, Councilmember Parala has a memorandum, I'm happy to support. Councilmember Parala?
Thank you, Mayor. And either Nancy or Justine, you didn't have any presentations with imagery? I know that, was there?
We didn't intend to, we're prepared to show images if requested?
I'm requesting, could we? Could we?
That's a yes.
And it really is for the benefit of my colleagues and as they're preparing some of those images, if you saw the memorandum that I wrote, it is supporting obviously all the recommendations from staff, but I do want to share with my colleagues sort of some of the work that is already going on. And the one component that we recommended within our memo is something that Adobe is agreed to and already striving for, which is to integrate an artistic component into the pedestrian bridge. But I think it would be great to see some of the imagery of the building itself and the bridge, so if there's any commentary to go along with it, please.
Okay, good afternoon, I'll start all over again. My name is Justina Highland and I'm the Director of our Project Management Office for Adobe. This first image that you're seeing right here is a view looking from 87 towards downtown and where you can see on the left-hand side would be our new building and you'll see the bridge that spans across to the current campus that we have. You want to go to the next slide? Okay, so this is looking, the view from the east, same thing, you're going to see the brand-new building on the north tower that's on the right-hand side, to the left-hand side, the bridge spans over to our existing campus. And this is really a beautiful view of at nighttime. Well, we are planning on lighting the bridge, as you can see from that, it starts kind of with the blue to that violet hue on the bridge. And the good thing about this lighting is that it can change colors. So we could change it for if there was a Sharks game and we wanted to represent it in teal or some other special event where the city would ask us to light it up in a special way, we would be able to do that. And it's really nice, you'll see in the next image is where, this is the nighttime image from where you see the park and you actually also see our building and how it's lit with the strand that goes up and you see the graphics there. What's really special, I think, about this image is that the park is on the right and I see it as a way, or we see it as a way, to activate the park at night and use it for other events, like say you had a movie night, because it now, it looks like it's a hub, right? And it's a place that's activated. So that park, I think, could really be a special place because of the way the bridge is lit. Is that the last one?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
No, that was it, thank you, Justine.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I know Scott's not able to make it, but he had, and I was hoping that he could have it prepared for today, but he did say that there may be trouble to get what was actually a sort of a video image of the bridge that shows the lights as they can kind of change color. Oh, you do have it. Oh, look at that, what do you know? You're back again.
Adobe, they know, Adobe knows a thing or two about display.
Yeah.
So hopefully you can see the light and how it's articulating across the bridge. It's kind of dancing, I guess you would say it that way. And again, you could see it in various different colors. Let me want to play it one more time. Yeah, there we go. Depending on the graphic that we have displayed, you know, you see on the window panel there and whether, what other art we've got there, we'd probably be changing those colors just to coordinate with that. Because it's a very, it'll all be holistic as one piece of art, I think, between the bridge and what's happening on both sides of the building.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. I think this really is a great opportunity to both showcase Adobe and the capabilities, obviously right, that Adobe has, and to really beautify a gateway into the downtown. And with this pedestrian bridge, I think we have a really good opportunity to do so. And that was my hope and so I was happy to see that Adobe is already charting down that path. And look forward to the opportunities and just want to echo the thanks that the mayor gave. And in case you didn't catch it, he did not denote that he is the most prominent resident in downtown. He did say it was Adobe, so I thought it was you, Mayor. But with that, then I'll move my memo.
All right, Councilmember Foley?
Just a disclosure, on my quarterly 700 form, I disclose that I own Adobe stock. I have since sold my Adobe stock so that I am, there's no conflict of interest in voting on this today.
All right, you can vote, that's good. Thank you. Councilmember Camus?
Yes, and I want to thank the mayor on this because the reason why we're able to do this bridge to begin with was as a result of the work that you created, the Ad-Hoc Committee on Building and Planning. And we recognize that we don't have the same types of laws in our city that allows for building above public airspace. And so that staff actually changed the law fairly quickly after we decided that this was the right way to go. And now we have this beautiful iconic project that we're going to be looking at. I really want to thank the staff for working so hard to make that law quickly happen and so that Adobe can use that law to make our city more beautiful and more iconic. This is the type of stuff that make our city more, makes our city more memorable and I'm super happy that Adobe's investing in our city and doubling down on their commitment to our city. Thank you.
Yeah, I do want to thank all the staff who've been involved, it took a lot of very creative work, I know, Public Works, planning, I know our legal counsel, everybody working together on this and Nancy's sorting it through, so thanks to everybody. This is essentially, I think, the first time we've done this, so appreciate, it's always hard the first time, hopefully it'll be easier for folks to follow. And thank you, Councilmember Camus. Councilmember, yep?
Yes, I remember when the mayor announced this, I was with you this summer 2017 and I was excited to hear that Adobe went to expand and I remember your excitement that day. I think this is a pretty fast-paced thing that we've pushed through, especially with that required kind of amendment to our ordinances and a change in how we do things in San Jose. I'm happy to see us experiment more with air rights and I know this is an encroachment, we're not giving up the rights completely, but I think this, we don't anticipate ever exercising the right to have them take it down. But I think this is a step in the right direction as we grow as a city and densify. I think there's a lot more interesting things we could do in regard to air rights. For instance, I know the mayor's talked a lot about how park space is dedicated to parks, but perhaps we can do something by building up and doing something with airspace over parks, just to create more community space and recreational space, meeting areas in neighborhoods that don't have acreage to build a proper community center. So I think that's really interesting and I'm thankful for Adobe to take us in this direction and bring us, bring to our attention the need to start looking at our airspace rules and regulations. And thank you Nancy and the team and all of staff who worked on this. Thanks.
Okay. Should also particularly thank Emily Lepoma, who spearheads many big projects in the Plaid Department. Thank you, Emily, for your work.
Hi, thank you. This is an interesting project. I wanted to comment on the building and the bridge idea. I hope I can offer some friendly constructive criticism. I enjoy downtown a lot, it was my, coming through over across the Guadalupe River was the first, my first introduction in my adult life to downtown San Jose. And the bridge, you know, the building itself, the Adobe building itself, I mean, it's kind of a steel window structure, it has kind of a clearness and a nice feeling around it. And while I'm okay with the building itself, the bridge that, you know, at night it will be lit up and it sounds like, it looks like it'd be very pretty. But in the daytime, the picture it showed, it's going to be like, it's very square and it's like a solid material, so you can't see through it. Was that exactly as the rendition was that's shown in the picture? That made me a little uncomfortable. Is there some way to make the bridge a bit more transparent feeling as the rest of the building? Is there a way to possibly, instead of making it so square, a little more arched or curved? And for the, where the beams meet the bridge itself, maybe that can be considered more rounded out somehow? I think it would, you know, an archways and curves would just make the bridge a much nicer feeling to it. And the idea of transparency also of the bridge. And I guess that's about all. And it would have a softer feeling. And it's, otherwise I'm fairly happy and I really, really like the feeling of how I entered downtown and so I hope you can work on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any further comment? Let's vote then. Councilmember Parala, you did move me your memo, is that right? Okay. All right, then we are on to 7.1. Thanks again to the Adobe team, we look forward to the groundbreaking very soon. 7.1 are actions related to the current and future Recycle Plus residential solid waste agreements. And here, Councilmember Foley was attempting to, I believe, bifurcate so she could recuse herself some portion of this, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Would you like to describe how you'd like to bifurcate this?
I'd like to bifurcate A1 and 2 and C1, little i and little 2i. Are those 1s? I don't know. Roman numerals, whatever.
Okay, anything that involves California waste.
I need to bifurcate anything related to California Waste Solutions.
All right. So why don't we take the California Waste Solutions items first and we'll ask you to, I don't believe we have any comment cards, so we'll ask you to leave for this first portion of the vote.
And I should state the reason for the-
Yes, thank you.
The recusal is that my campaign consultant is the consultant for California Waste Solutions and there's a prohibition against me voting for anything that he is a lobbyist for within a year of my hiring him. That expires in November.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember. All right, so under the rules, Councilmember Foley, we'll step back. We do not have a presentation on this, do we, Carrie? I just want to thank Carrie and her team and Kip Harkness and everybody's worked so hard to get this to the finish line. We'll entertain a motion or a comment. Councilmember Mendez with the motion, Councilmember Sparsa with the second. Any comment or question? Okay, let's, this is Justice California Waste Solutions first. Let's vote. Okay, and hopefully Councilmember Foley can hear me and we'll ask her to come back out. Everybody's got a joke? All right. We're limping to the finish line of the fiscal year, here we go. Okay, she's coming? Okay. Okay. All right, welcome, Councilmember Foley. We'll now entertain the remainder of the item. Is there a comment, question, or a motion? Okay, that's unanimous. See, Carrie, that was easy. Thanks everyone for your hard work on this. We're on to 7.2, it's a construction contract change order with San Jose Water Company for repairs of water service and mains. There's no presentation on this. Thanks Jeff Provenzano for answering all my questions. Any comments or questions? Motion from Councilmember Sparsa, second from Vice Mayor, let's vote. Okay, finally, the final item is 8.1, which is Measure T, the new fire station placement prioritization. We do have a presentation from the chief and his team. Just note there's a memorandum from several of us dated June 14th that I asked my colleagues to consider. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Licardo, Council. I am Robert Sapien, Fire Chief. I'm here with Assistant Fire Chief Reggie Williams to provide the Fire Department's Fire Station Placement Priority List, or Prioritization List, rather, for which we seek your acceptance to enable the city to proceed with search and acquisition of properties for placement of new and relocated fire stations. The Fire Station Placement Prioritization seeks to achieve Council Direction provided on September 11th of 2018, which revised proposed general obligation bond project categories to include the building of Fire Station 37 as a top priority, the building of two new fire stations, including property acquisition or conversion of existing city land, and finally, the rebuild and/or relocation of Fire Stations 8 and 23, including property acquisition and conversion of existing city land. With that Council Direction, the Department, in coordination with Public Works and the City Manager's Office, proceeded to determine the most suitable areas for placement of new fire stations and the relocation of Fire Stations 8 and 23. The fiscal year 2014-15 mayor's June budget message included direction to the Fire Department and the City Manager's Office to undertake a comprehensive organizational review of the Fire Department. The final report was accepted by Council in 2016 concurrent with the Fire Department's strategic business plan. The organizational review included standards of cover analysis and the consultants provided a station prioritization placement. The organizational review recommendations were created from sound standards of cover methodologies and address areas that remain today identifiable as service gap areas based upon four-minute travel time goal, which is part of our city response time standard. So on this slide, what you're looking at are the 2016 organizational review station Today, the Fire Department offers its revised Fire Station Placement Prioritization List, which factors organizational review findings, but also seeks to address critical system performance issues identified through ongoing response time analysis. Comparatively, the Department's prioritization places greater focus on stabilizing resource availability in areas of the city where emergency response volume is high as our late response
As the council is aware, the Department's performance is measured under two response time standards for Priority 1, and that's lights and sirens, which is Code 3. These include the city-established standards of arriving within eight minutes 80% of the time and the county emergency medical response standards of responding within eight minutes 90% of the time. These standards differ in that the city response time standards include call processing, turnout time, and travel time, whereas the county EMS standard includes only the turnout time and travel time. The Department has sought to optimize response time performance through a variety of strategies. As indicated in this chart, the Department has since, since March 2018, has met the county EMS response time standard, however, remain unable to achieve the city response Closer analysis of the Department's response time performance under each of the segments indicate that the four-minute response time performance falls well below 80% goal. Travel time performance can be influenced by distance to the emergency scene, within response area, unavailability of first duty resources, and traffic conditions.
To better understand factors influencing travel time performance, the Department plotted emergencies over calendar year 2018. The chart you see now includes all- The chart you see now includes all incidents over that 2018 calendar year period. The red areas indicate greater emergency response intensity. It's important to note that this is a comparative color scheme. Some of the station areas that appear lighter red or pinkish and yellow are responding to more than 3,000 calls annually. Comparatively, the busiest station in the city is Station 26's area, which has surpassed 6,000 responses annually. Next, to further understand our response time performance, we plotted for that same time period all responses that took longer than four minutes of travel time. Late responses for calendar year 2018 were plotted to aid in understanding how late responses related to identified gap areas beyond four-minute travel time reach and high emergency response demand areas. The results, as reflected in this chart, indicate that late response patterns closely match emergency response patterns. Organizational review travel time service gaps were reassessed and largely validated. However, the relocation of Fire Station 21 in January of 2016 partly closed the residential areas in the service gap identified as Centerwood in the organizational review. That's the east side, just north of the Evergreen Valley area. The department narrowed response time performance analysis to each response area to identify which area required greatest support. As stated earlier, the Station 26 response area responds to over 6,000 emergency responses annually. This chart reflects that 3,375 of those responses in 2018 exceeded the four-minute travel time goal. That's 8.81% of the citywide late responses. In fiscal year 2017-18, the Station 26 area performed at about 55% against the city response time standard of 80%. This particular analysis was significant in determining the department's fire station placement prioritization, and findings were supported by feedback from field battalion chiefs who are better in tune with day-to-day system performance. This chart reflects the prioritization offered by the department and estimates both possible locations, and the purple areas indicate four-minute travel time estimates. Again, the red dot placements shown are only estimates as we still have to go through real estate acquisition. The department is confident that this fire station placement prioritization list will result in improved service and performance in new fire station response areas, and will greatly reinforce surrounding areas as well. We are happy to take any questions, and we were able to review the memorandum submitted by Mayor Liccardo and council members Carrasco and Peralos, and we may comment on either. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. Would you like to offer any comment now on the memorandum?
Only that, on Item 1 recommendation, that particular strategy of adding capacity to individual fire stations, I think does have some very positive potential. We haven't completed full analysis of where those places might go, but to the point of your recommendation, it had been a discussion with airport staff regarding new Station 20, which is being built on the Coleman side of the airfield, and we had also been contemplating what size Station 8 would be. So there is some potential there for further evaluation.
Thanks, Chief. And in my understanding, Station 20, is it confined to only respond to the airport if it's using airport dollars currently?
Currently, the airport build would be FAA-funded and would be confined to the airport. However, we do believe there's opportunity to create an outward-facing bay potentially, and additional dormitory space which could serve the area, which has been traditionally hard to serve. We actually serve the airport on the curb side, most frequently with Station 5, which is over on 10th Street, which is not a, within the four-minute response time goal.
Great. Thanks, Chief. Okay. Back to the council. I don't believe I have any cards for this item. Comments? Councilmember Sparza?
I just wanted to say that Station 26 is in District 7, and I'm really excited about Station 37. It will alleviate the burden on Station 26 tremendously, and that fire station has more calls than the entire city of Mountain View, as you know. So I had a question, though. When can we expect a further Measure T update with more specific on the developments? And will we have a separate progress update on Fire Station 37 later this year?
I'll answer in two parts. One, maybe I'll defer to Matt Cano from Public Works, but we're happy to provide reports as the council wishes on progress. However, I think the timeline for all projects is best answered by Matt.
Thank you. Matt Cano, Director of Public Works. We have an item on next Tuesday's council agenda with an update on all Measure T projects, and we'll be ready to discuss the status of the fire station projects.
Including 37 in that?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Pross?
Yeah, just wanted to echo the excitement about the opportunities here, and specifically around Station 8, very old station, really confined area. And in the memorandum that I was able to co-sign onto, as we look for a new space for it, certainly the ability to, you know, kind of increase our space there within the station, and then maybe our coverage. But overall, I'm just excited about the opportunities, and was happy when Measure T passed, and now we're starting to actually realize some of the benefits. And is there a motion yet? If not, I'll move the memorandum that I co-signed.
I want to thank our residents for supporting Measure T. It's obviously very important to get us here, and, you know, Station 8 was sort of the poster child for why we need Measure T. I recall the chief standing in front of Station 8, in front of a video camera, saying, "The station is falling into a creek, and that's why we need this measure." It's pretty compelling. Anyway, any other comments? Okay, let's vote then on the motion. And thank you for all the extensive analysis. It really makes it very clear for us when it's so visual. Appreciate all the great work the department figured that out.
Councilmember Jimenez?
All right, it's unanimous. I think we have no cards on public comments. You do, Mr. Beekman? Okay, it must be in one of the boxes. Come on down.
Thank you for wanting to review a new ALPR program for downtown and not including it at this time in your 2019-20 budget. But I'm still worried two to three new ALPRs may somehow find a way to be somehow requested. To better introduce myself, this is a subject I've talked about today, about public oversight, and thank you for what you're developing with public oversight, and hope we can talk about this some more. To better introduce myself to the subject of San Jose ALPR use, would it be a massive breach of city and national security protocol to be given a simple answer if I was to ask city government in San Jose, how many cameras are within one ALPR system? Are San Jose ALPRs also equipped with some sort of video still technology that besides capturing license plate numbers, can a second camera also capture a picture of an entire scene around a license plate photo? So to ask again, does San Jose use two cameras within one ALPR system? These should be, this should be a simple routine question in the guidelines around the future of openness and transparency with community technology questions. Will this question be too difficult for your city government to answer in simple terms at this time? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the meeting, believe it or not, is adjourned.